Please stand for the invocation by Dylan Douglas and the pledge by Vice Chair Jim Steed.
Dear Lord, I pray that you would also grant me the favors here, sir. I pray that you would offer me guidance. Help continue every efforts both here in our own community. Uh, naturally.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
Aye.
Aye.
America.
I'll believe.
God.
Thank you. We have a full quorum here this evening. Gentlemen, you've seen the previous minutes. I need approval of the previous meeting minutes for July seventeenth.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the July seventeenth meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And I need approval of the agenda of this evening.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body of the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Mixon to obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. We'll get right into the debate agenda. New business of Final Platt Tilery Park. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is the Final Platt for Section three A of Tilery Park, which is located off Baker Place Road. Shows the location of this section. It is kind of in the middle of the planned residential development there. And this section includes fifty-five lots. It includes a mix of single-family and future townhouse lots. This does bring the total number of lots in the development to two hundred and seventy-one. And they are bound by a zoning condition that does require a completion of the second access point prior to plating of three hundred. The minimum single-family lot size is fifty-five hundred square feet in accordance with the PRD. And the average lot size is eight thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet. The single-family lots in this section are primarily front-loaded with required setbacks of either fifteen or eighteen feet from the right-of-way, depending on whether or not the water line is in front of the lot, and seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks. There are a couple lots that do have the option to access from the alleys. So if those are alley-loaded, they will be able to reduce the side setbacks on those lots to six feet. There is eleven-point-three-nine acres of open space in this section, including the future amenity area and an existing cemetery. And sidewalks and street trees will be provided on both sides of the roads. As you can see, construction is not complete at this time, but they can move forward with kind of the paperwork side of the Final Platt while they wrap that up. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Final Platt for Tilery Park, Section three A off Baker Place Road.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. H one, A two, Rabbit Run, Phase one. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is the Final Platt for Phase one of the Rabbit Run subdivision located off Cobham Road. This subdivision is zoned residential agricultural, so it is a larger lot development. And this section includes sixteen single-family lots with a minimum lot size of two-and-a-half acres and an average lot size of two-point-eight-six acres. The required setbacks are a hundred and twenty-five feet from the center line of Cobham Road, seventy-five feet from the center line of the local road, ten feet from the side property lines, and twenty-five feet from the rear property lines. There's no dedicated open space in this development, nor is it required. Construction is not complete at this time. But as we saw with the previous one, same thing, they can move forward with the Final Platt while they wrap the construction up. And staff is recommending approval.
Danielle, do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Final Platt for Rabbit Run, Phase one off Cobham Road.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. H one, V one, Massage Operators License. Will.
Sheriff's Request for Skin and Ivy Aesthetics and Massage Salon LLC doing business with Skin and Ivy Salon, Hopkins Andrea Williams, at eight oh seven Oak Ridge Drive, Suite B, for the onsite and mobile massage services. She meets all requirements of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval. Quest.
I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Massage Operators License for Skin Ivy Aesthetics and Massage Salon LLC in an Ivy Salon to provide massage therapy at eight oh seven Oak Ridge Drive, Suite B, for massage services.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Public hearing of our meeting tonight. H one, C one, Provisional Home Occupation for Augusta Best Cakes. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation at fifty-two fifty-six Woodland Road for Augusta's Best Cakes. This shows the location of the property off Woodland Road between Lakeview Drive and Newman Town Road, just outside of Grove Town. It is currently zoned residential agricultural, as are all of the immediately adjacent properties. And the applicant is intending to run a home bakery from this site. Normally, this would be a customary home occupation and would not require a planning commission review. However, in this case, the applicant is planning to use a trailer adjacent to the house for the pickup location instead of having her customers come to the house. Those pickups are intended to occur on Saturdays only by appointment, which should enable her to keep tabs on the required trip limits for a home occupation. So there's no particular concerns with allowing the business to operate in this manner, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. Owner or applicant Frank Caesar or Erica Caesar would like to come forward and add anything additional that was mentioned? Anyone here?
Got one.
Like to come forward? Speak your name and address, please.
Erica Caesar, five-two-five-six, Woodland Road in Grove Town. First of all, thank you guys for your time this evening. As previously stated, the operation will be as such, scheduled appointments by pickup only on Saturday. The expectation is only for three to six per week. It is as such, just a home bakery operating out of the house, but pickups located at the adjacent location.
Okay. We have any questions?
Are your cakes good?
Pardon?
Are your cakes good?
They are. Everything's farm-to-take. I'll have to leave a business card. I debated, in fact, bringing treats, but figured otherwise. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? I have a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Provisional Home Occupation for Augusta's Best Cakes at five-two-five-six Woodland Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. H one, C two, Provisional Home Occupation for CNS Site Solutions. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation at two eighty-five Canterbury Drive for CNS Site Solutions. This shows the location of the property off the end of Canterbury Drive. It is currently zoned R one, single-family residential, as are the properties to the north and east. To the west, you can see the Crawford Creek hood. The immediately adjacent parcel is actually open space and largely floodplain, so it's not developable property. And this shows the aerial of the site with the existing house and accessory buildings. And the applicant's proposal is for essentially a contractor's business. It would provide services such as land clearing, demolition, and fencing. There is some equipment related to providing those services that would be stored in this area indicated right by the house. That is essentially in the center of the property, so it's about as far from the neighbors as it can be located. And this is a fifteen-acre parcel, so it does have some space and some separation. The business operations themselves, since it is a contractor, will take place off-site, so there won't be any actual work on the property other than the storage of the equipment. And provided it's kept in this area, as indicated in the application, it shouldn't impact any of the neighbors. And staff is recommending approval. Thank you, Danielle.
The owner, Brandon Higgins, or applicant Caleb Higgins would like to come forward and add anything additional? State your name and address, please, for the record.
Caleb Higgins, two eighty-five Canterbury Drive. And I'm Brandon Higgins. Um, as shown in that blurry image, there's a pole barn there. And right there, I mean, it's about two hundred yards away, the neighbor's house is located. We keep the equipment stored there only under circumstances that the skid steer or the tractor will not be on the job site. I just wanted to add that.
We have any questions?
I have none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member here tonight would like to speak in favor or against? Very good. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Provisional Home Occupation for CNS Site Solutions at two eighty-five Canterbury Drive.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. H one, C three, R Z two-five dash oh eight dash oh one, Change of Conditions. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a change of conditions at one oh six Davis Road. This shows the location of the property on the east side of Davis Road, just south of its intersection with Washington Road. And it is currently zoned C two, general commercial, as are all of the surrounding properties. This property also had a conditional use for massage approved in two thousand and twenty-one. At the time of that application, the property owner did request a condition limiting that use to only suite D on the property. There is now a new tenant who would like to move into suite E and offer therapeutic massage from that suite, which requires the change of conditions. At this time, the owner and the applicant are requesting that that condition be removed entirely to allow the conditional use to apply to the entire property as it would ordinarily. This shows the aerial of the site with the existing commercial buildings and a photo of those structures. And this property is in the mixed-use activity center. This is intended to have commercial uses like this. The conditional use has already previously been approved. So it's already been considered to be appropriate to have this use in this location. And removing the condition just basically allows it to apply to the property instead of limiting it to one suite. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. The owner of Edge CRE two LLC or applicant Tamika Hines would like to come forward and add anything additional or speak?
Tamika Hines. I just, I applied for suite. But we decided after I submitted the application that it was probably best to just try to go ahead and get it for the whole unit. And it's basically going to be offering therapeutic massage to veterans as I'm doing right now. I'm currently located at thirty-six eighty-five Riverwatch Parkway and just need a bigger suite.
Very good.
I have none.
Any other member would like to speak in favor or against? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of File R Z two-five zero eight zero one, Change of Condition to Allow Massage Therapy in Any Suite on the Property at one oh six Davis Road.
I second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. H one, C four is next. R Z twenty-five dash oh eight oh two, Conditional Use of Massage. Dylan?
Yes, sir. This is another conditional use application for massage at forty-four fourteen Hereford Farm Road. This shows the location of the parcel, just south of Hereford Farm Road, a little bit west of the intersection with. This shows the zoning for the property. It's a little bit hard to see. E one Professional Zoning District. As you can see, across Hereford Farm Road, there is residential zoning. That's a little bit different from the professional or planned unit development zoning on the south side of the road. This application is not proposing any site.
And this section includes sixteen single-family lots with a minimum lot size of two-and-a-half acres and an average lot size of two point eight-six acres. The required setbacks are a hundred and twenty-five feet from the center line of Cobham Road, seventy-five feet from the center line of the local road, ten feet from the side property lines, and twenty-five feet from the rear property lines. There's no dedicated open space in this development, nor is it required. Construction is not complete at this time. But as we saw with the previous one, same thing, they can move forward with the Final Platt while they wrap the construction up. And staff is recommending approval.
Danielle, do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Final Platt for Rabbit Run Phase One off Cobham Road.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. H one, V one, Massage Operator's License. Will.
Sheriff's Request for Skin Envy Aesthetics and Massage Salon LLC doing business at Skin Envy Salon, Hopkins Andrea Williams, eight oh seven Oak Ridge Drive, Suite B, for the onsite and mobile massage services. She meets all requirements of ordinance. Staff recommends approval. Quest.
I have a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Massage Operator's License for Skin Ivy Aesthetics and Massage Salon LLC in an Ivy Salon to provide massage therapy at eight oh seven Oak Ridge Drive, Suite B, Massage Services.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Public hearing of our meeting tonight, H one, C one, Provisional Home Occupation for Augusta Best Cakes. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation at fifty-two fifty-six Woodland Road for Augusta's Best Cakes. This shows the location of the property off Woodland Road between Lakeview Drive and Newman Town Road, just outside of Grove Town. It is currently zoned residential agricultural, as are all of the immediately adjacent properties. And the applicant is intending to run a home bakery from this site. Normally, this would be a customary home occupation and would not require a planning commission review. However, in this case, the applicant is planning to use a trailer adjacent to the house for the pickup location instead of having her customers come to the house. Those pickups are intended to occur on Saturdays only by appointment, which should enable her to keep tabs on the required trip limits for a home occupation. So there's no particular concerns with allowing the business to operate in this manner, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. Owner or applicant Frank Caesar or Erica Caesar would like to come forward and add anything additional that was mentioned? Anyone here?
Got one.
Like come forward? Speak your name and address, please.
Erica Caesar, five two five six Woodland Road in Grove Town. First of all, thank you guys for your time this evening. As previously stated, the operation will be as such, scheduled appointments by pickup only on Saturday. The expectation is only for three to six per week. It is as such, just a home bakery operating out of the house, but pickups located at the adjacent location.
Okay. We have any questions?
Are your cakes good?
Pardon?
Are your cakes good?
They are. Everything's farm-to-tape. I'll have to leave a business card. I debated, in fact, bringing treats, but figured otherwise. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? I have a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Augusta's Best Cakes at five two five six Woodland Road.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. See. Sorry. H one, C two, Provisional Home Occupation for CNS Site Solutions. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation at two eighty-five Canterbury Drive for CNS Site Solutions. This shows the location of the property off the end of Canterbury Drive. It is currently zoned R one, single-family residential, as are the properties to the north and east. To the west, you can see the Crawford Creek hood. The immediately adjacent parcel is actually open space and largely floodplain, so it's not developable property. And this shows the aerial of the site with the existing house and accessory buildings. And the applicant's proposal is for essentially a contractor's business. It would provide services such as land clearing, demolition, and fencing. There is some equipment related to providing those services that would be stored in this area indicated right by the house. That is essentially in the center of the property, so it's about as far from the neighbors as it can be located. And this is a fifteen acre parcel, so it does have some space and some separation. The business operations themselves, since it is a contractor, will take place off-site, so there won't be any actual work on the property other than the storage of the equipment. And provided it's kept in this area, as indicated in the application, it shouldn't impact any of the neighbors. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. The owner, Brandon Higgins, or applicant Caleb Higgins would like to come forward and add anything additional? State your name and address, please, for the record.
Caleb Higgins, two eighty-five Canterbury Drive.
And I'm Brandon Higgins.
Um, as in, as shown in that blurry image, there's a pole barn there. And right there, I mean, it's about two hundred yards away, the neighbor's house is located. We keep the equipment stored there only under circumstances that the skid steer or the tractor will not be on the job site. I just wanted to add that.
We have any questions?
I'll have none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member here tonight would like to speak in favor or against? Very good. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for CNS Site Solutions at two eighty-five Canterbury Drive.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next, on the... Sorry. File H one, C three, R Z two five dash oh eight dash oh one, Change of Conditions. Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a change of conditions at one oh six Davis Road. This shows the location of the property on the east side of Davis Road, just south of its intersection with Washington Road. And it is currently zoned C two general commercial, as are all of the surrounding properties. This property also had a conditional use for massage approved in two thousand and twenty-one. At the time of that application, the property owner did request a condition limiting that use to only Suite D on the property. There is now a new tenant who would like to move into Suite E and offer therapeutic massage from that suite, which requires the change of conditions. At this time, the owner and the applicant are requesting that that condition be removed entirely to allow the conditional use to apply to the entire property as it would ordinarily. This shows the aerial of the site with the existing commercial buildings and a photo of those structures. And this property is in the mixed-use activity center. This is intended to have commercial uses like this. The conditional use has already previously been approved. So it's already been considered to be appropriate to have this use in this location. And removing the condition just basically allows it to apply to the property instead of limiting it to one suite. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. With the owner of Edge CRE two LLC or applicant Tamika Hines would like to come forward and add anything additional or speak? Thank you.
Tamika Hines, um, I just, I applied for, uh, but we decided after I submitted the application that it was probably best to just try to go ahead and get it for the whole, um, unit. And it's basically going to be offering therapeutic massage to veterans, as I'm doing right now. I'm currently located at thirty-six eighty-five River Watch Parkway and just need a bigger suite. All.
Very good.
I have none.
Okay. Any other member would like to speak in favor or against? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file R Z two five zero eight zero one, Change of Condition to Allow Massage Therapy in Any Suite on the Property at one oh six Davis Road.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. H one, C four is next, R Z twenty-five dash oh eight oh two, Conditional Use of Massage. Dylan.
Uh, yes, sir. This is another conditional use application for massage at forty-four fourteen Hereford Farm Road. Uh, this shows the location of the parcel, uh, just south of Hereford Farm Road, um, a little bit west of the intersection with... This shows the zoning for the property. It's a little bit hard to see. E one Professional Zoning District. As you can see, across Hereford Farm Road, there is residential zoning. Um, that's a little bit different from the professional or planned unit development zoning on the south side of the road. Um, this application is not proposing any site changes. They're looking to make use of existing space on the property. Um, so there's not going to be any site changes that would negatively impact those residents. They're also keeping relatively normal business hours, nothing outside of nine AM or seven PM. So they shouldn't adversely affect those, uh, residential neighbors. Um, this shows a building on the site. Again, they're looking to make use of existing space in that structure. It did here on the existing site photos. Uh, it is also within an activity center. Again, it does border a neighborhood's character area, but for the same reasons I explained previously. It's not anticipated that there should be any adverse impact on residential neighbors. Uh, there are similar uses approved nearby on Ponder Place Road and North Bel Air Road itself. Both of those examples are also within the exact same zoning district. So it is, uh, you know, deemed an appropriate use in both this character area and this zoning district. So staff is recommending approval of the...
Thank you, Dylan. With the owner, owner Hafalina Enterprises LLC or applicant Denise Deveraux would like to come forward and add anything additional? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Denise, Denise Deveraux. My address is eight six eight Deerwood Circle in Evans. Um, I have been at Rosewater Spa and Wellness since it first opened about ten years ago, which is the location on Ponder Place, which Mr. Douglas referred to. And I would like to basically expand myself, and so to do that, I would need to move out of Rosewater, where I'm currently renting the space where I can teach other massage therapists how to do what I do. I'm a medical massage practitioner also. So I do work with doctors and lawyers that have car accident victor victims. Thanks.
Do we have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member here would like to speak in favor or against? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file R Z two five dash oh eight oh two, Conditional Use for Massage at four one, four four one four, Hereford Farm Road.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next here is H one, C five, VA two five dash oh eight dash oh one, Variance to Section ninety dash nine eight. Will.
Sheriff's Request for a variance, how to remove the maximum setback in Evans Town Center over at four three seventeen Washington Road. I currently zone C two general commercial. This location of the property again, kind of right down the street from us. And current zone C two, most everything around it is zone C two. You have this pud to the north that is more professional than not. It shows aerial view of the site and the platte of the property and the site itself. So what they're, what they're looking to build here is a Queensborough Bank. It's going to be about four stories high, about six thousand square foot footprint. Uh, but within Evans Town Center overlay, you do have a minimum and a maximum setback. You can kind of see it here, running along in front of the, in front of the building. The, uh, building should be up, basically meeting that, that envelope. Again, corner lots usually have issues doing that on at least one side. Uh, this one has a little bit more going on than that. Uh, we'll see in a moment, there's some utilities on the site that are, kind of, we're, we're left there with a revision to the, the, uh, to the street itself. Just saw the building. We've, we, we actually went by it very quickly. This shows the right, the right-of-way realignment back in two thousand and twenty-one. You can see where Evans Town Center Boulevard used to be, going right through the property. And under construction, again, getting it realigned over to, uh, to the left there. And then the completed project itself. Now, the thing is, is that we left on the ground a twelve-foot water line, kind of going through the site itself, and then some water lines around Evans Town Center Boulevard. Uh, they'll have to move those, those water lines in order to make this, this site work. Uh, but again, those utilities are really the primary driver of moving this building back on the, on the property itself. Due to those factors, staff has no concerns with approving this request to remove the maximum setback in Evans Town Center. I conclude staff recommendation.
Thank you, Will. With the owner of Queensborough National Banking Trust or applicant Alexandra Reynolds would like to come forward and speak. Add anything addition. Thank you.
Um, the only thing I'd like to add is that a further thing that pushed the building further back was the drive-through at the rear of the building. Um, so pedestrian people, parking cars wouldn't have to cross across the drive-through to get to the building. That was a factor as well.
Okay. What was your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Alexander Reynolds, twelve ninety-six Broad Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other member here would like to speak in favor or against this? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file VA twenty-five zero eight zero one, Variance to Section ninety, ninety-eight, to remove the maximum front setback at seventeen Washington Road.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And we have the same, uh, the H one, C six, HE two five dash oh eight dash oh one, a height exemption on the same building.
That is correct. We're looking to increase the building maximum height from fifty-five feet to eighty feet. Again, same property. We've already seen it. Zone here. Here's the location of it, zone C two. Uh, within C two, basically the fire marshal can say, yeah, we can go above this, the maximum height, up to a certain amount. Uh, in this situation, uh, this is again, current zone C two, um, aerial view of the site, plot of the property, site, concept plan, building elevation itself. You can see here, it's going up to eighty feet in height, actually just below that, size of the requested height that they're, they're looking to get the exemption for. Uh, both Fire Marshal and Fire Department have reviewed this. Uh, they did have some conditions with it, um, that are boilerplate, to be honest with you. It's things that I already have to comply with, but since there are conditions with it, we are recommending approval with conditions, basically saying that it's, some of the conditions noted in that letter provided, include staff recommendation.
Thanks, Will. Do you have anything further to add to that? We have any questions?
I have none.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. File HE twenty-five dash zero eight dash zero one, file a building height of eighty feet, property at forty seventeen Washington Road.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And lastly, H one, C seven, VA two five dash oh eight dash oh two, Variance to Section ninety dash one forty-four, Placement of Buildings and Structures.
This is a request for an eight-foot-high fence at eight forty Brookfield Parkway. Uh, it's zoned R three, single-family residential. This location of the property, again, off of Brookfield Parkway. It is adjacent to Richmond County, has a little piece of it that is actually in Richmond County. We'll see on the platte. Currently zoned R three, in the aerial view of the site. Plat itself, again, this little sliver down there is in, is in Richmond County itself. The request is for an eight-foot-high fence. Uh, back in twen- so we, we, we do know it was there in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the, the applicant has said it was there in nineteen ninety-one, so it's been there for a while at the, at the end of the day. Uh, this shows it back in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, there was a small hurricane that came through back in September, October, uh, took, took it down. Uh, so they went and back to eight feet in height. Uh, that does not meet the requirements within R, R three. It's basically a six-foot-high fence. Uh, but again, it has been there for a while. Uh, they were not, they, they did not realize that, um, so there were no permits acquired for it. Uh, there was a complaint, mandatory enforcement about this. That's why we're, we're seeing it this evening. Um, overall, really no concerns from staff. Um, they, they do plan to stain it and finish it and that sort of thing. It's not totally complete at the moment. Um, again, with hurricane helene damage, we typically say there were, either we, we do a variance to fix the issue or we, through the permitting process, if there wasn't a lot of damage, we can kind of work through it that way. This situation, I know permits and basically totally destroyed, um, and a code enforcement complaint, so this is why it's coming through for a variance. Again, no real issues. There wasn't a building permit, as noted, uh, so there's a condition that they have to require that within sixty days of approval by the Board of Commissioners. That concludes staff recommendation.
With the owner, applicant Sandra Bragg, would like to come forward and speak. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Sandra Gore Sprague, and I live at eight forty Brookfield Parkway in Martinez. Um, the previous fence, we were just replacing the fence from where it was damaged by helene. And, um, so we made it as high as the other one was. Nobody had a problem with it before that, and the fence had been there since nineteen ninety-one, according to the previous owner. Um, we consider this a safety issue. Uh, we're out of town a lot. We're both retired. And, um, you know, a six-foot fence, somebody can skate easily, but with a pool back there, want to make it a little harder. And so we thought, you know, thinking about the safety issue, we don't see why anybody would have a problem with it.
Okay, we have any questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member here tonight would like to speak in favor or against? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions, file VA twenty-five dash zero eight, Variance to Section ninety dash one forty-four. File an eight-foot fence, eight-foot tall fence at eight forty Brookfield Parkway.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I don't believe we have any legal matters tonight. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
I'd make a comment.
Or is yours?
Um, as some of you may know, Trey Allen has resigned or made his announcement that he's going to resign from the commission. Um, since I heard that, I have thought about running for the same position the next election. So in order to, my intention is to do that. So in order to do that, I will have to resign from this one. So I want to announce my resignation from this board. I appreciate all the staff, my buddies up here. But, and I'm going to miss it, but, uh, that's what I'm planning on doing. I just want to make a, a public announcement. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and you have our support, and we are going to miss you.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion, second. All those in favor, we're adjourned. Thank you.